I had a whole lot of meetings in the back. I mean, raised hell.
Yep.
You know, the tour bus, they wait behind them and just go through this. Right around 10 feet behind them, they're airborne.
That's how you and I were though.
Yeah. Sounds like all the risk is on. And that we, my buddy and I stayed overnight one time. I was going to the little islands. It's been a long time since I've been checked in for 13 years. And we had groceries delivered all over the place. So we found that one, we brought that somebody back and took them. Thank God, I did something about the follow these stuff. And our parents were waiting in the store for us.
Oh my God.
I'm sorry, I said that. I was a single father here, didn't say it.
My dad would just always say.
I thought you were two minutes behind.
Yeah.
More like four.
All right, tough times.
Yeah.
I can write a few.
He's a little.
Okay. Um. Like to, uh, are you ready?
Yeah.
I was just wondering. Let's get this done. We can start, I'll just get, I'll keep working on it.
Keep working on it? Okay. Uh, welcome. And, uh, to the Lurgic Webster Board Meeting for May 23rd, 2024. Uh, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will lead you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which has us, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Very much seated. My first order of business this evening would be public comment. If there's anybody who would like to address the board, come to the microphone, state your name. I'm glad you're rushing, my daughter. I, I guess as you might be able to see, there is no one here. Uh, so no one coming to the microphone. So I will close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we will quickly move to Lurgic Business. Item number one, we have a resolution to approve the claims and warrants.
I went over the law, and I, uh, you make that motion to approve the claims and warrants.
And I agree, she'll all second it.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Belkine?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item number two is a resolution to approve the 2024 25 tax warrant. That's part of your packet. For the general fund. It turns out to be a total of $596,123 in this improvement district. $24,160 sewer fund, $276,975. Commercial sewer, $35,734, with a total being, for all purposes, I would ask for a motion to approve the 2024 25.
What's the difference between the sewer fund and the commercial sewer?
The commercial sewer is what we bill, what we need collecting, um, for commercial properties. And then that's actually.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're billed orderly or something like that based on water consumption. Whereas the sewer fund is just a flag, flag number, you know, 275 or whatever.
Okay, well, that's kind of right.
And that's the, that number right there, the $35,000, is actually the delinquent sewer. So that's what has not been paid up until right now, which, so we'll go on the tax bills.
Here, I'll make the motion to approve. I'll second it.
Trustee Belkine?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy? Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a motion to approve surplus declarations. You have that in front of you, please, that, um, we have a W4. That's in 2008, that truck, that is seven, 2014 Ford. And a P17A, which is a 2013 Raval sweeper. And there also is the accepted bids received for the sale of vehicles by option as follows. The W7, I believe we received a bid of $51,850. And for the P17A sweeper, $15,300. So, there's a new check for the final bid there, $25,304.
So what are you gonna do with the W4?
Yeah.
Um, put that bank up when it's closer to, well, I think in September, we can put it in the September mat option.
Yeah, the September one?
And.
So should you declare it a surplus now?
Yeah.
If you're not gonna action it until September? What if you want to use it? Declare it a surplus?
Well, we can undeclare it a surplus, I guess, or take it off the list.
And, uh, and use it the meantime, I disagree.
Yeah.
And we don't want to declare it a surplus later. Yeah.
Yeah.
So he will delete, uh, the W4. So modification of that authorization as you declare the vehicle surplus of each of the W7 and the P17A.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Belkine?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, you have a, uh, budget mod and transfer for a year. We were approved in the end of the year. In a physical year, next year. It's first, so there are a lot of things on the transfer.
Yeah.
Modification, that's maybe the year. A lot of the transfers going on, modifications.
Were they just not in the right places or something last year?
No, this happens every year. Things just get moved, basically. I, it's pretty, it's pretty standard. And since Danielle wasn't our treasurer at that time.
I know. Well, that's kind of what I'm, yes.
But no, it wasn't in the wrongs. But the budget is a guess, that you really, you're guessing. I'm sorry.
I understand that part.
So sometimes you just have to do things. It's pretty standard for that to happen, actually.
I think sometimes we might not have seen these in the past because like the 8134 hundreds, the board passes a budget as, it's like 8134 hundred, so like, these budget modifications weren't presented.
My show usually did it later, but they, they always happen.
No, it's like, they don't have to, I think, because they pass it as a 400. They're almost there.
To normal for any business.
Yep.
Oh, it really.
One of these are like waste bags or anything.
It's not over, it's just, it's just fleeting.
How do we?
What was the one?
They really flipped up on the doggy waste bags.
Which one's that?
That was good.
$145 worth of dog, please.
Please.
And I'll add up, sir.
Because those who want the dog. They could have looked through the void.
Yeah, that's right.
I don't think we need to go through all of these now.
Line item by line item. Don't you lift it over? I have a motion to approve. Notifications. I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Trustee Belkine?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy? Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes. I would say, I mean, I would guess that since this, this budget we just passed is Danielle's budget, that it would be a little bit less of these, you know, at the end of the year.
Well, that's what I think, yeah.
Yeah. But there are usually some, but, you know. Plus, there's also some that she gets told to do from the auditors too, so. But I would guess it would be less next time.
Uh, next we have a resolution to authorize a treasurer to transfer $250,000 on fund reserves on balance to the general fund vehicle replacement reserve. This was done, I believe, Danielle talked about that, and that we have a lot in the, um, restricted one. So she's looking to place these funds in a specific reserve. And the, um, general vehicle replacement reserves, we've kind of been putting them into just to kind of be something to establish now.
So, and where's the money for that?
Yeah, that's.
See, the unrestricted.
No, I was just looking at number six. It says to transfer $93,000 to the vehicle replacement reserve. Number five, it says to transfer $250,000 out of unreserved fund balance. You know where it's coming from and where it's going. Where's the $93,000 now, just sitting in the village?
Says as a result of the sale of equipment.
Something there.
From the sale of equipment.
Yeah, but there's gotta be an account somewhere. It's gotta be somewhere.
Yeah, one account.
It's like, there's not like $93,000 in cash sitting in a drawer somewhere.
I mean, I, so it's in the, I would guess it's in the general savings, but I can ask.
Does that like automatically become part of fund balance?
I think unreserved fund balance, but let me go check.
There's gotta be cash in an envelope in his desk.
That's what I said. There's gotta be $93,000 somewhere.
Yeah.
Saving equipment.
Well, now we can't buy anything, we talked about.
I expect the $93,000 to be ten dollars.
I'm sure, I'm sure he knows where it is.
She comes from, she comes from unreserved money, she just didn't tell us. Comes from the unreserved fund. So she's using $93,000 and ten dollars.
Which was in the, the sale, sale with my mother in there. And because we are under, we're holding quite a bit in unreserved funds.
Yeah, and she wanted to comply with the, well, the fund balance policy. I asked a couple of things to get it below the, I forget what the 25%.
It's currently sitting in the sale of equipment line.
So it's sitting in the sale of equipment fund?
Line. And I think really just means general.
That's a, well, that's a revenue account somewhere, sale of equipment.
Yeah.
There's one is a transfer of the funds from the, um, unreserved fund balance into an identified, um, vehicle replacement reserve. And the other one is a transfer from the, uh, sale of equipment and the ones that's in it. Right.
Sorry, what was that?
And so.
One is one.
$93,000.
Yeah, that's directly from sale of already, yes.
And that, that's not just a fund balance.
That's going into.
The reserve.
Yes, yeah, that's into the vehicle replacement reserve. And the point of that is that so that we can start having a reserve for, for vehicles instead of having to do leases, which, so you can just take it out of the reserve.
Or what happens if they deal with the budget of vehicles. Every year, that for $300 or whatever in vehicle replacement.
Yeah.
This would be pretty true.
Yep, yep. And then the $250,000 is our unreserved fund balance is getting too large, you know, the OSE. And so the OSE doesn't like that, so, um, we want to put that into.
It was specific.
After, uh, after the transfer of $250,000 on man's reserve fund balance, what's the balance?
It's still like 800,000, um, but I have taxes in it.
Yeah.
It's, well, just from, from the, in the unreserved. It's old. Yeah, I just messaged her. She had a kid, James, so I told her that I would message her with questions.
So the $250,000 that probably come out of unrestricted fund balance, uh, very defined.
Well over a million.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand.
As of end of the last.
$93 comes from, say, this year. That is currently sitting.
Okay.
And then most likely this year, we'll be adding to the unreserved fund balance again this year. So it's important that we put what we're putting in there to the reserve.
So number five, a resolution to authorize the treasurer to transfer money from unreserved into the fund, general fund vehicle replacement reserve. We have a motion to that?
You already.
I don't know if we did.
I'll make a motion.
You know what it was for.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Belkine?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy? Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then we have the resolution to put the, um, $93,000, $10 from vehicle replacement uh, to the vehicle replacement reserve. And after the help of the sale of equipment, and it's currently here.
Okay. I got there.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy? Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Belkine?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, if I can, Mayor Byers. Danielle would also like to talk to you guys at the next meeting about, um, putting some into, she had been working with Don, and she would like to put a little bit into buildings fund balance, or sorry, the reserve as well, so that if something happens to village hall, that's also there for emergencies and things like that. So she's gonna come talk to you about that soon.
What's in there now? Reserve, she's looking at what's in the reserve.
Yes, I believe it was originally, um, set up as the wells and commissionings. Um, so Don instructed her to change it to just buildings.
Yeah. And so.
I don't, I don't think there's anything in the account now. It originally was established in 2015 primarily to save money to cap the wells and get rid of the buildings and the well field. I'm not sure it was ever funded, but the language of that reserve account also includes construction or reconstruction of any building owned by the village, not just the well. So rather than set up a, a second building capital account. And it can't, and it can't be used for emergency stuff. It's a capital account. So it can only be used for capital expenses. So if the roof, the repair, no, you can't take the money out of it. But to build a new village hall, or put an addition on something, or, you know. So that's where the money's at. Which makes sense because, I don't know, in the future. In my view, in Jake's, I, I think, you know, the village could use a new TPW building somewhere.
On the ground.
So.
Just wanted to clear that off, that's, we want to start over.
Right, I'm just, yeah, I just want to get closed up and feel like a bone's hole. Her old will come and find it someday.
Part of the time, you know, I had.
All right. Last we have here, a resolution authorizing the village treasurer to sign an engagement letter authorizing MMB to conduct the Village of Webster audit for the physical year ending May 31st, 2024 in the amount of $20,220. Uh, this would, uh, not apparently include MMB attending a village audit meeting. So we will have to decide whether or not you wish them to come or simply look over the audit material we paid them by.
Thank you, I wanted to point that out because Free Max had included that in what we paid, and we got a bill we weren't expecting for when Tom came that one time. And it was pricey. So just wanted to give you all the information in case, um.
That, that current letter, I think, says $350 if he comes to a meeting.
It ended up being like, I'll have to ask, but it was like $350 or like around $500. That in combination with him coming out to explain stuff about us, about changing the super fund to a governmental fund, that in combination of coming here was around $800, and that's all.
Yeah, well, every, yeah, every time we come out there in person, they carry.
Yeah.
But I think it specifically, that 13er agreement or whatever you wanna call it, specifically says $350 if he comes out and explains the audit, like they do every year. In addition to the cost of the audit, which is.
Jesus.
Keeps going up. But I reviewed it in, you know, the form of it's okay.
Okay, the form.
I made no, I made no comment as to the cost.
That can be defined, and actually later, which is not included. If they wish to have them come to.
Yeah, if you don't want them to come out, then you don't have to pay them $350. If you want them to come out, then you just pay them the $350.
Get it included, that 20 grand, geez.
Should be.
I mean, it's nice to have that. It was always really helpful to you all when Free would come, but Nora would come. But, um, it's totally up to you. I just want you to have all the information.
No.
Good.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Trustee Belkine?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
I'm just.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Would we, um. Next year, I'll sort out, let's see if there's a lot more or not. Throw it out.
Yes, um, she also wanted me to point out that the audit is going up because of these schedules are very time consuming, and, um, we don't remember what Gatsby number it is, but I believe that references it in that letter as well. Which lies a little bit higher, but, I mean, the fact that everything's going.
Yeah. This is the second year.
Yeah. So there's nothing wrong with that.
It has to be, it should be, it's pretty early, early. Aye. Okay, Don, who do you?
I just, I, I had with me, and I'm not sure why I kept this, but, just, it's a rest card. This is the financial executive summary from MMB when they came out in March and explained all this. And this says, as of May 31st, 2023, the unassigned fund balance in the general fund was a little over $2.7 million. So that's, you know, so you take, so take $250 from that. And I don't know what else you might have spent this fiscal year, you know, this year. But that was, you know, 22, 23. So I don't know if you, if you, um, used fund balance for taxes last year or whatever.
Did we fund any reserves with this budget? I don't remember.
So, but that, that says of May 31st, 2023, which is probably less than that, because I, I, I've definitely had, I don't remember what you did in this year's budget that's about to end in a couple of days.
Well, and what they accept is that we really need to do the projects that we budget for, because that attributes to the unreserved fund balance.
Correct. There were some that we do not do.
Things that carry over.
It's in the budget, we do it.
But there's still a healthy, healthy round in fund balance.
And, as mentioned, Danielle was looking to put some funds.
Right, that's why she'll put some in that building fund.
Yeah.
Might even increase this one, actually.
And she said 1.8 million is what we could put into reserves based on the fund balance policy. Which is scary, it's kind of scary for me to put into reserves, but, all.
Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, no, the only other thing I wanted to mention is, um, Monday, and I'm gonna be out of the country starting Monday for, till June 8th. So if Heather calls or texts me, it's gonna cost me 10 bucks each time, according to Verizon.
Oh.
So.
You call Monday, I'll call Thursday.
You wanna take my village phone?
Send emails are fine, you know, because there'll be wifi, and, you know, those are free.
No call, no call, you're texting, I'm done, darn.
We're going to Scotland and Ireland and Wales.
Oh, love it.
And we're gonna be in Normandy, France, the day before D-Day. We're going, we'll be there in the fourth of July, you know. Then we go back to England and spend a couple of days in London.
Oh my gosh, I love it.
That's awesome. Congratulations.
No, no golfing.
No golf.
No golf.
It's all right.
How can you go there without, I don't know.
Wow. You sure?
Mary doesn't golf. But we're gonna be on the west coast of Scotland.
It's all good, it's all good.
Not the east side. It's like we're, gotta go.
Okay, now when do you leave?
Memorial Day. So you can email me, but I may not get right back. Remember, there's a six hour time difference.
I understand.
Oh, gosh, enjoy. Oh, very, very.
Well, you enjoyed it, so it'll be awesome.
You gonna post pictures? I hear Mary, I'm sure Mary loves.
Okay.
She loves pictures, so I'm sure she'll be like, sorry.
I understand.
I'm gonna enjoy it. Okay. Jake?
Yeah, just, um, the sidewalk project that was community development block grant from. Yeah, just the sidewalk project that was community development block grant from 2023, we just completed down on Curture Park. I think the neighborhood community was very cooperative. Vehicles were out the streets, the guys were working, they went through. Weather provided some delays, but when they get there, they went through real fast and looked really nice. The other part of that project was the Kieran Place pipelining on Donovan. That's scheduled, waiting to hear back on the schedule on that. But we're gonna, I guess, do a deal here before the end of the budget here to make sure we can cover the funds that we usually cover out of this year's budget for that. We're starting, we started some cracks early in the last few days and tomorrow they're going to start doing a little bit. There's four streets. They're doing tomorrow micro paving. It's a notice is out to a lot of residents on those streets, so you're going to get back to buy, I know it's Gordon, Kent, Todd, there's some short ones, Maryvale and I want to say a section of Donovan, but I don't have it. We're doing a bunch of it, just the ones that we're doing tomorrow. So those things are going along. One thing I was going to ask Don and I just thought I'd been here, I've been kind of crazy here, but the part of the sewage tube plant, it's not part of, I guess it's part of the project, but it's not, but it's our sampler, the sample building, the town's moving their sample building to the new sample location. We have to have chlorine monitoring down there. On the chlorine monitoring, required the reagent, which requires that it not freeze. So we're going to put up another shed. We have to have electricity out to the shed, the current electricity at the town plant is not big enough to carry the load. We talked about running a 50 amp circuit out there. It's on the town's property, it's the town's contractor. The price there is 34, about $34,000 to run the electric. Because it's, you know, it is quite a distance from their influence building where it's going to go out through. There's a lot of things in the way. We did, we looked at alternatives, we had this a little bit ago, but we did look at alternatives, moving a sampler up along our line going into the plant. There's not, you know, we thought we had it all figured out. There's electric lines right there and everything's good. And we checked through the town and there's not, we said they had checked the same thing for some other use and it's not the right electric there. I don't know if it's real high voltage stuff that's going by, so we need to step it down or maybe a transformer would make it cost prohibitive to put it, you know, a transformer there and then we had to reduce the power down, what we could do. So I'm generally allergic to electricity, so I have to read what they say when they tell me. You know, so I have light bulbs, batteries, and the electric is on. So I don't know if that's something, if this is part of that whole move, if it's something we need specific authorization from the board to sign. I have to let Art know down at the town about the, you know, whether or not to go. We really don't have any choice, I guess. There's no other way to get power. It's a couple thousand feet off the road or 1,500, 1,800 feet probably off the road. We can use them to get power back to it. We tried to do it separately and I think it costs more. Or if it's the same, we'll do it any other way. We did try that one alternative, but I don't know, I guess I should have sent this out, but I haven't done it.
Where is it going to be located?
It's basically where the current shed is now that we tested sample to combine flow. Our new shed will go there, they're moving that existing shed to the new sample location for the town. We're going to put a shed up.
So we have to have our own?
Yeah, and I guess the power that's there isn't sufficient for what the needs going to be. So we're going to have a little heater in there to keep the building from freezing because we're going to have sample equipment in there.
Was this included in, I forgot, the 16 million, whatever, was this $34,000?
It was not, it was not calculated into that because we didn't have that at the time we did the bond resolution.
Are you going to include it?
Well, then I, well, it could be, I think this board needs to take a separate resolution to approve Jake or somebody signing a contract or whatever, authorizing the town to engage the electrician or something, I don't know.
Yeah.
For the $34,000. The actual cost, though, can come out of the EFC, you know, it's part of the general upgrade of wastewater treatment plant.
Exactly.
So the money can come out of, if there's enough, can come out of the, you know, the interest free bond, so. You know, it's one of those things, when the town sends the village a bill, Danielle can send it through EFC and get paid that way. But I think because it wasn't, Jake didn't, this part of the project wasn't really known at the time you did that amended by a resolution, you probably should take a resolution now authorizing Jake to authorize the town to, I don't know.
Actually, could be agreement with it.
Is there an agreement?
There, there's a contract with the.
I forget what, or sent.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking. Shed power, shed power is Webster sample, 34,800 and the adder is 500, that's if there's a submeter. So I would assume we authorize up to 35,500 just to not exceed ourselves, but this is
But does it?
No, there's no execution on there. There's just a, here's what it is.
It's addressed. Well, it's a quote from Hewitt Young Electric, which is the electric contractor that the town's using for this upgrades down at the plant. So I assume you'd authorize the mayor or Jake to, to accept their estimate.
Accept or accept?
It would be to have, accept. Because I think at the bottom of this letter, Jake can print it, just say, accept it, date it, to sign it, and then send it back to Art.
Okay.
And I'm sorry for springing this, I just, so crazy and we're trying to find an alternative that wasn't 34 grand, but it seems as if there is.
But that makes sense. That makes, that makes sense.
34,8 was supposed to be.
34,8 and an adder of 500 for installation of a submeter if they, if they do that.
That way the electrical use will get billed directly to the village?
It'd be nice if we could do that, you know, so it's worth the 500 to get that building.
Yes.
Wouldn't we be able to do that? I don't want the town to show the same, you know, you use this much, you're.
Right. And have your own, have your own meter developed.
Yeah.
And that's our.
I don't know if they can set it up with that from RGD because we're, how it's coming in and it's coming off of their building that we're through. You'd think they would just be able to meter that separately, but then RGD would have to take that then off of because it would already go through the town's meter. But it's not side by side, it would already go through there, so they'd have to reduce, take it off the town's meter. It's probably not the only time they have it set up like that.
Exactly.
Unless they just look at it as a nominal.
What we're going to do, we should be able to read a meter, a record, what it is we're using there.
Yeah, since it's a submeter, it sounds like the bill may come from the town. And then, yeah, the bill would come, you'd pay the town and the town would, you know, but Jake or somebody could go out there, John could go out there and read the submeter to make sure that whatever the town's billing is accurate.
Correct. Just a few. Well, then I have a resolution to allow Jake to accept. An agreement to replace the sample shed at the town's wastewater treatment plant up to $34,800 with an additional 500 allowances for the submeter.
I'll make that motion.
I'm just giving you a moment, hold on, one second. And that was to accept it?
Yeah, to accept the agreement to replace the sample shed.
Okay. And was that Trusty Flower?
Hi.
Trusty Lindsay?
Hi.
Trusty Lucky?
Hi.
Mayor Myers?
Hi.
Motion passes.
And I think that that would be the best thing to do. Try to incorporate that into what they say is continue standing, whatever, don't worry.
Okay.
Okay. Next week begins, what, Tuesday, the rush pickup? Pretty much later, right? That'd be the first of the.
No, it's not, it's not, not a full week, it'd be the week after, right? I don't even know what, I think because Monday's the 26th, so it would be the week after rush pickup and the week of the, starting, the Sunday's the 2nd.
Okay, so that would be.
Weekend June 3rd? Yes.
All right. Kirk's office.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I work at Superman.
I don't know.
It's been a little crazy, but we're, we're doing, we're handling it. So it's been good. Tax bills will be coming soon, so we're prepared to work on that. And, yeah.
Some telephone lines in there?
Jake and Karen, yeah, they didn't stop me. All right. Passports are going to all, we had, oh, I couldn't tell you, we had our passport audit. We have that every two years. They, I stood there for two hours as he hammered Jeopardy questions at me. I kind of got into it, it was fun. But he said overall, everything looked great and people did a good work, we did a report from level all. And Karen and Jake have been working together to the codes and all that funny stuff. So, yeah.
Good. All right. And we're announced at our next meeting, it'll be on Thursday, June 13th, here, seven o'clock.
I just got a couple.
Anything else?
Just a couple of quickies. The museum's working on their life membership tree that we have there. When you come in to the museum, it's on the right and it's on the wall. And the leaves that are on it, you can't really even read the names on it. So we're redoing the whole thing. So we're getting all kinds of estimates and doing all kinds of stuff. And then District Preservation, we've got Megan Clem coming in. She's the director for Preservation Services for the Landmark Society. And she's going to be coming in near the end of June to talk with us about District Preservation and a few things that we're trying to do.
Oh, they're all. I also emailed tonight and I CC'd you both and you and Judy that I wanted to check in with Lynn Barton to see how she's doing and if she needed any support or whatever to come with her presentation for the next meeting. So I CC'd you both in there.
Are we looking for that?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm working with her on a few things over there.
That's why I CC'd you.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Also, also I believe Jake, you could piggyback on this, the Memorial Day Parade Monday, next night or 9:30?
Yep.
9:30.
That begins, that's.
Being, going to be in the parade is at Friday.
Right. It's Friday.
Then it's just.
It starts.
Left on South Avenue and then another left down Main Street and goes down to the cemetery. Down to the cemetery. Quick parade.
Yeah, we actually, we got a, I got a phone call today from Mrs. Bourbon asking us to spread out some barricades and that for them at a time. So we're just going to have somebody, we're going to try to pre-load them and have them ready to go, but put them out Sunday so they're not strewn all around and looking like garbage Friday and Saturday.
Well, that's kind of.
Just going to put them out and then we'll pick them back up Tuesday, but we don't want to leave them out there for tomorrow, Tuesday.
I'd still like to think about having some, a couple of special police to. What did they? Because they talked about it, it was like, what, $12,000? It was not like a big deal. I'm going to track the mic at the town and see if I can get any more information on it.
The guys have been working really hard to get the village all ready and pretty and all flowered out.
Oh, my gosh, it looks so good. Oh, really, gosh.
So we started putting out the, the.
Yep.
That sign, the sign I was bugging about?
Yeah.
Welcome to Webster. I noticed that they can buy the new spa there. I looked at that sign. Welcome to Webster's. Wish we had some flowers in there, new sign.
Yep. The flowers went in today, the garden club does, so every area is filled up with signs. So I think them too. But yes, we have to, you know, we were working with, I forgot what, maybe he was representing at the time in historic, it wasn't historic preservation, but we're working with folks to come up, I could get, I looked at getting those signs repainted, the gentleman that could repaint them isn't a wildlife painter, so we were looking, setting up some of the
District Preservation, so I think he was looking into some of that too.
And why would go about what, what do we want in the middle? You know, he said he couldn't recreate what was in those and they're all, you know, they're all fading. So we, I think I had sent out some examples, like the gazebo and different things like that to see if that would work. We talked about doing it in a different material, like a dye bond material and have it professionally printed. The sign painter wasn't actually, he was very, I thought, very reasonable to get them there, it was just a matter of what we put in the middle. Then we discussed getting rid of those signs, replacing with the ones like we have down on North Avenue, that one new, old with cobblestone base. That's crazy to find, but let me revisit that again with Matt, with some of the, I think some of the opportunities we have now with, especially with the New York Forward thing, I think there's somehow we can look at, maybe incorporate that as one of the public projects where we can do. You know, half of me says, let's take the darn thing down if it looks like it does, but I want to just, you know, close up shop, you know? That's the problem, I guess, so that's.
I think they all down that and do by mobile, same thing, right?
Yeah. They all have different birds on them.
Yes.
They're all, they're, I mean, the guy did a great job painting them, but they can't, no one can recreate those, so I think we have to get something more generic. We get something that we just print up, but I think it loses some of the character. Yeah, when you have, especially the entrance one, but that one that's down on North Avenue, kind of across from Kitterford is a new, just the Webster one with that cobblestone base and a shelf on it, I think looks very nice too. I'm just getting someone that could do the cobblestone again, come up and do that smaller amount and do it for less than possibly a house.
That would be here. Of course, that would be included in the New York Forward. But then the other two would have to be definitely here, I think. But then they have them done, we get the same hang. Of course, the two, whatever, on one, the next, the next one, one day, it progresses to the third one, but you start on one, it's one day, two, three. That's something that we discussed now.
Yeah, another thing that District Preservation is looking into way back, 1919, it was a huge, we're trying to measure it, it's got to be, she had to be at least 10 feet tall, like a statue. a statue of a woman in, had to do with a, a woman's temperage type group that was here in Webster, and it was located somewhere like where Berry's and Burke's, it was located in there, and it was, it had a trough for like horses to drink out of, and then it had a little cup down there for dogs, and so we're trying to find out more information on it, and then thinking about if we can come up with it, what the cost is, we're going to do that, and we might even, you know, it's even by the fireman there, because it was North Avenue or South Avenue.
That's neat.
So, yeah, so we're looking into that one too, and I thought, oh, it is so cute, oh, my gosh, I loved it, yeah, that, nice, well, it's in Webster, the book, the Webster book.
Anything else? And thank you all for watching, and for coming, so at this time, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn.
Oh, make that motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
And happy anniversary, Carl.
7:50.